Yeah, I got some good resources.
Good.
It'll be good. Yeah.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Call please, Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wagley.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel. Mr. Wisher.
Here.
Here. Please rise and join me. The agents.
United States of America. And to the Republic which stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's special meeting agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the special meeting agenda.
Motion by Director Canwischer, second by Director Wagley, that we approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. Our first item on the agenda is the public hearing for the proposed property tax levy. We'll turn that over to you, Mr. Clane Smith.
All right. On March twentieth, the county would have sent out a statement to all residents of the county reflecting the property taxes to be levied for next year for the school district that people live in, the county that they live in, and the city that they live in. So what I have up on the screen here is the numbers that would have been reflected for the school district property taxes for next fiscal year, which runs from July first, two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. The main things to point out on this is the school district for next fiscal year, if you look at this column on the far right that says budget year proposed property tax levy fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, we would be levying less in total property taxes for next year than we did for the current two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. In the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, our total property taxes levied were twenty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars. And for next fiscal year, we would be levying twenty-seven million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And the main reason for that decrease in property taxes levied for next year has to do on this line that says general fund levy. The district is not able to levy for cash reserve for next year because our cash balances are at a level where the state does not allow you to continue to levy for cash reserve if your cash balances reach more than twenty percent of your previous year's expenditures. So that is the main reason why our total property taxes levied for next year would be less than they were this year, and our rate also would be going down next year. This year, our rate rounded to the nearest dollar was thirteen dollars and forty-six cents per thousand of taxable valuation. Next year, the rate would be, what was sent out, when the county sent this out, the rate would be twelve dollars, round to twelve dollars and twenty-four cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. So about almost a dollar twenty-five to dollar thirty decrease in the overall levy rate for the district for next year. That is all my comments on it, so unless the board has any questions or otherwise, we will just open the public hearing.
I'll take any questions or comments from the board. Open it to a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak about the proposed property tax levy, now is your opportunity to do so. See and none. We'll go out of public hearing. And that will complete our first meeting. All right, moving along here. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Call please, Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wagley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Canwischer.
Here.
Here. Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Canwischer, to approve tonight's agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to all our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Do we have anyone that would like to comment tonight on a non-agenda item? All right. Moving forward, uh, to the board members, if you had any, if you would have anything you'd like to share tonight, Mrs. Wheeler.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to our elementary school teachers, staff, and appreciation for a lot of activities last week and this week between the spring choir and band concerts and programs and the VIP day experience. My kids go to Riverdale Heights and that for us was today. I know that is a lot of work, having all those extra bodies in buildings and parking lots and things like that. And thank you to the folks at the bus, busing center who help with Riverdale Heights shuttling, helps a lot. Just want to recognize those folks for all their hard work.
Thank you. Director Ayers.
I have nothing, thank you.
Similar, I just appreciate the spring concerts at the elementary schools and thanks to the PTA, the decorations on the stage and all the work they did to help make that a fun event. It's a great team effort.
I miss those VIP days. Director Smith.
Maybe steal a little bit of Bernie's thunder, sorry.
It's okay.
A big congratulations to Leaning Tones, who won basically the state championship for vocal jazz. I think it might be the first time ever. And I am also told in the last eight years, the best they scored was fourth, so I think that was quite an improvement, quite a showing even. On top of that then, our state solo and ensemble festival representatives had a remarkable number of top-level performances. Bernie may dive into the detail and that's why we're refraining from any further on that. But I am always impressed, not just on the athletics side of the house, but on the arts side, and these are great examples of how we just seem to dominate statewide, I'm good with that.
Amazing. Thank you. Director Wagley.
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate Leaning Tones as well, as they were first place in vocal jazz and I was certainly very, very community proud. Also, my son is the choir director at Cedar Rapids, Washington, and they got third place, so very happy that, you know, they got, kind of both sides of, of my life got some type of recognition for that weekend, which was awesome. Also, I just, I know Mrs. Myatt is here, but on April twenty-fourth, the twenty-sixth, there's going to be Anastasia being played, and that's, that's the yearly play, I'm sure you'll talk more about it, but if people are able to go, it's usually a wonderful event. I think it's seven o'clock on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, is that right, Mrs. Myatt? So, just a shout out, if people get a chance to go to one of those performances, it's always very gratifying to work with our students in performing.
Thank you. Moving on to others, Ms. Zen, did you have anything this evening? Mr. Hyatt.
I'll echo the sentiments of thanks for the spring programs. One group I would really like to throw a shout out that hasn't been mentioned is our custodial and maintenance staff. It's, it's literally like being roadies for a band. When they go and set up and tear down, and it's fast-paced, and they have to work around the rehearsals as well as the performances themselves. Thanks too, of course, to our, our music teachers, they put together a darn good program that is very focused on learning. The timing of this, a good little reminder that the timing of this is, it really is an opportunity for the kids to showcase how they've grown over the course with their musicianship. And so, that's really cool, to see all of that come to fruition, as well as all the VIP days and those fun things that are happening this time of year. I also want to thank our, our theater department for putting on an awesome show for our third grade across the school district. So our students and staff got to enjoy the annual third grade field trip to PVHS Theater to see Alice in Wonderland, and it was awesome, as usual, with their shows. So, lots to celebrate in the world of arts.
Thank you. Mrs. Damon.
Updated personnel agenda in your board packet.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Clane Smith.
I have nothing.
Ms. Kenyon.
I just have a little tidbit as well. All seven of our students that applied, you may have remembered when Stacy Kentai from Project Search came and talked about that program for our students that are fourteen-plus transition age. All seven of our PV students that applied got accepted into Project Search for next year. So, we continue to, that is a program we do with North Scott, Bettendorf, and Pleasant Valley. And for, I think, the last three years, Pleasant Valley has had the highest number of participation, and all seven students that applied all got accepted, so super excited for them.
Thank you. That's awesome.
I can go first, real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a real quick thank you to Steph Riesch, Jamie Humm, he's the high school dean of students, with Mike Holly, high school principal. Last week, for the second year in a row, we had over twenty students from Denmark come spend the week with us here at our school district, and they do different tours throughout the town. But Steph Riesch and Jamie partnered the students from Denmark up with students from our school. Now, they, they get a hotel and they do that, but throughout the day, they're with our kids. The Denmark students cook a meal for us one night at the high school, and then our kids will take them to their house, or take them around town, go out for dinner at night. It concluded on Saturday night with a opportunity to go bowling at TBK. Our kids just love it. I think they would love to go over there sometime and visit them as well, and kind of have partnership, but really a cool experience for the students for two years in a row to be coming back here. And each year, it's different kids because they do, the boarding school in Denmark is a one-year boarding school typically. So, have a cool, neat experience for them to come over and our kids to experience it as well. So, thank you to our staff who put it together.
Absolutely. That's cool. Thank you. Ms. Bruce Turner.
All right, well, as many of you have mentioned, our students have really been busy making their mark across the state. I have more announcements than typical, but it's really showing how talented and well-rounded our Pleasant Valley students are. So up first, I want to recognize Kelly Wu. She completed a cybersecurity training program through the statewide youth broadband advisory council hosted by the Iowa Communications Network. Throughout the year, Kelly and ten other selected students from across the state participated in Fortunets? Doug, I'm looking at you, see if I'm pronouncing that right. Introduction to the Threat Landscape Course, Gaining a Foundational Understanding of Cybersecurity Concepts and the Evolving Digital Threat Landscape. So it's pretty prestigious to be able to complete that as a high school student, so congratulations to her. Our PV high school robotics team, this time I'm reporting on the big robots. They earned a captainship at the Central Illinois Regional earlier in the spring, and then they traveled to U and I for another competition where they earned a seven-two qualifying record during the Iowa Regional, and also another captainship. Congrats on a great season to no limit. Congratulations to Vibe Hav Gankoda for receiving an honorable mention in the Plant Science category at the State Science and Technology Fair of Iowa. It's hosted by Iowa 4H Youth Development, and it provides a platform for student researchers in grades six through twelve to connect with professional scientists and present their research findings while demonstrating their understanding of the scientific process. We had several students attend the State Leadership Conference for Future Business Leaders of America. They all took part in multiple competitions, and nineteen members qualified for nationals. In addition, five members were state champs in one of their events. Congratulations to everyone who attended. As previously noted, the leading tones performed at the Iowa Vocal Jazz Championship and placed first in four A. Under the direction of Meg Byrne, they earned the title of state champs, and Roman Sadler was selected as an outstanding soloist. The next update is in regards to our JA Titan Business Simulation. Pleasant Valley High School had two teams compete in the competition, which is a simulation-based program where students act as CEOs in the phone industry, making strategic business decisions and analyzing outcomes in real time. PV earned both first and second place in the initial round. One PV team advanced to and won the scholarship round, which was held on April tenth, and each student on that team will receive a one thousand dollar scholarship to support their future education. The next update is about the Quad City Arts High School Art Show Recognition. We had several artists who showed artwork there. Our students earned thirteen awards totaling in over two thousand, two hundred in cash prizes. And then Sherri Tang also took home first place with over a one thousand dollar cash prize. And Sherri's actually going to be recognized at our May twelfth meeting, we're going to invite her in so she can showcase some of her work, and her art teachers will also introduce her that night, so we're excited about that. But special note on that, Mr. Schaefer, who was one of our high school art teachers, was also honored. He received PV's first teacher award in over a decade. And if you are interested in seeing our students' artwork on display, the exhibit is open to the public at Quad City Arts in Rock Island through May first. The Pleasant Valley Physics Club participated for their first year at the state competition, and they earned an impressive second place out of more than twenty teams in the state of Iowa physics competition. The competition features five events that challenge high school students to apply physics, physics principles through creativity, problem-solving, and engineering design. It's aligned with the next-generation science standards in the Iowa Core, and the event promotes student engagement in STEM through real-world applications. We don't want to leave the junior high out. They had two teams that competed in the regional Battle of the Books. We had a second-place finishing team as well as a fourth overall placing team, so congrats to all of those students who participated. And then I think I only have two more, we're almost there. As previously mentioned, we had several band members who participated at State Solo and Ensemble Festival last Saturday. The band received sixty-six Division One Superior ratings, fifty-one Excellent Division Two ratings, and eleven Division Three Good ratings. We also had three students who received the Best in Center Awards. And finally, rounding out the recognitions for this evening, our PV engineering students win, sorry, they won the Quad City Tech Challenge Trébuchet Competition. So those are our students who are on engineering teams, and they all placed in the top ten and had a team who won. The Trébuchet Competition is part of the QC Tech Challenge. In this event, teams design and build trébuchets to launch raw eggs at targets at distances of seventy-five, one hundred, and one hundred and twenty-five feet, with accuracy and distance both contributing to final scores. So this is just one of three of the hands-on STEM competitions in the QC Tech Challenge. So the other two are Battle of the Bridges Contest and then the Cardboard Boat Regatta Race, which will be coming up in the spring. So points earned across all events determine the overall top-scoring high school and the individual. So, we will anxiously await the results of the other two competitions.
I'm going to add to the one that you just mentioned was the Junior Achievement Titan Challenge one, because they won, I think they also now qualify for a national competition in Atlanta, I think, this summer, so if they choose to go to that, so.
State Solo and Ensemble was here, and it took a multitude of parents to make that happen, so thanks to them.
Right, that's great, wow, that's, uh, that just shows how much opportunity students have to get involved in so many different types of clubs and groups. You know, you look at some of those clubs, like the Physics Club, which is newer, FBLA just started a couple of years ago, and to have nineteen qualify for nationals, that's very impressive, so. And huge congrats to Leading Tones, that's, that's pretty cool, so, thank you so much.
Drama recognition, is that now?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
We didn't forget about you guys.
Good evening, I am Christina Myatt, I'm the director of theater for the district, and March is theater in our schools month, so we spent all of March celebrating all the wonderful things that we did. I brought some of our student officers with us today, they're going to do a lot of the talking, and then we have a video to share with you. So let's introduce our board real quick. We have Brenna France, who is one of our publicity chairs, Sophia Palmicalla, who is the other publicity chair, Gillian Garrus, who is our vice president in-house, Kaylee McCaw, who is our drama club president, and Will Emmerly, who is our vice president out of house. Will's going to talk for a few minutes. Go ahead, dear.
So one thing PV Spartan Drama really excels in is student leadership compared to other high school theater departments in the area. One of the things we do really well is student direction. So throughout the year, we have a lot of shows that we allow students to direct. I think we have four, right? And that's really impressive, as it allows students to not only develop skills in the art form such as direction, but it also allows students to really excel in leadership and push their leadership skills further. We also have an amazing student board, and that offers a variety of ways for students to get involved, such as if they're good at social media, there's a social media thing. If they're good at outreach, there's an out-of-house vice president. If they're good at leadership, there's president, there are a lot of positions on that board. And we also, because of our student leadership skills, we've been able to have a state thespian officer for the past thirteen, thirteen consecutive years. I am this year's state thespian officer, and the responsibilities of the state thespian officer is to really connect with students from across the state of Iowa in relation to theater, and also advocate for theater in high schools.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about our student opportunity beyond PV. Our, our program really fosters students to go beyond just like doing shows in high school and that's about all you get. You learn a lot of skills through like directing, being on crews, being on stage, getting over stage fright are all really big things. But even beyond that, theater gives you so many opportunities to compete in other things. So like last year, for instance, I participated in the Triple Threat Awards, which are the Iowa qualifier to the National Jimmy Awards, which was a really neat experience to connect with students from all across the area and get to perform on the Des Moines Performing Arts Center stage, which is really awesome. We also have a lot of students who qualify at Iowa thespian Festival for different events, we have students who get to perform on the stages and qualify for other events. We also have a lot of students who qualify at Iowa thespian Festival for different events. We have students who get to perform on the stages and qualify for other events. Um, I personally qualified all four years of high school to go to International thespian Festival and be adjudicated by professionals, which is another really awesome opportunity that PV helps foster. Um, yeah.
Um, on the topic of um theater being able to just foster skills, um, one of the great things about having so many shows that we get to work on is it really gives you a scope of what you're passionate about, um, especially when it comes to post-secondary options um, and what you want to do after high school. Um, as some, I am personally committed to a college outside of St. Louis for stage management and we have plenty of alumni who have gone out, um, have left PV and committed to schools for theater and have, have had really successful careers. Um, and just the environment um that we foster in the department, I can confidently say that the amount of shows and the amount of work that is given to students who want to excel um has really set people up for success in terms of being able to audition or interview for fine art programs outside of just high school.
Gillian touched on the environment. Our theater department has been able to foster and I feel like as one of the social media managers, I've gotten the wonderful chance to get to meet so many people throughout our department from like the freshmen to the seniors because I've been hounding everyone to fill out forms for various posts to spotlight them throughout the year. But I think as it is for each um extracurricular activity in this school, having this sort of um interest everyone shares, you're easily bonding with all these people and we spend so many hours with everyone and you just make so many new friends. You meet people you wouldn't normally meet because at the end of the day, we're all very different individuals, but we all share this same interest and it's really special that we all work so hard to put on shows that we're so passionate about and it creates a very, very beautifully loving community.
So as part of, you're n- you're the You're coming next, you're coming next. So as part of Theater in Our Schools Month, we celebrate all the things that have happened so far this year. We had six national thespian qualifiers who will get to go on to International thespian Festival to uh perform for uh professionals in theater as well as compete for scholarships. Uh, we had some of the largest speech teams we have ever had at PV. Our large group speech team had seven Division Ones and two All-State nominations this year. Our individual event speech team had eleven Division Ones and one All-State nom. Mr. Emmerly, who actually got to go and perform at UNI and do his public address. Um, we are part of the Iowa High School Musical Theater Awards, which provides our students with behind-the-scenes opportunities, opportunities to work with professionals. Uh, Gillian went to a stage management workshop. We went to a portfolio development workshop. Lots of cool things through there for our s- production of SpongeBob and it's kind of hush-hush because we can't make a big deal until May seventh when everything is announced. But our production got Outstanding Overall Technical and Creative Achievement. We received three nominations for Outstanding Achievement in a principal role for Will, Kaylee, and Lauren Lundie. All three of them are eligible to participate in the Triple Threat Program this year and can go through that process. Uh, as Lauren and Kaylee are graduating, the day that they would have to be there, I think only Will's going to try and take care of that opportunity. So we'll see. Um, we received an Outstanding Achievement in a behind-the-scenes role for Gillian in stage management. That's an extra process she had to go through in creating a portfolio and presenting it to industry professionals. And then she was chosen for that award. Because of that, she has the opportunity to apply to be one of the assistant stage managers and work with a professional stage manager for the Iowa High School Musical Theater Awards presentation that will happen at the Des Moines Performing Arts Center. And she has just blossomed in that way, um, being able to attend those behind-the-scenes workshops associated with getting that award. Uh, we also received special recognitions for our student orchestra, for Kate Bestold for performance, and for Cooper Olderog for sound design. So we will find out on May fifth, they announce other awards. We will find out what kind of things we get to do as part of the awards presentation that will be held this year on May twenty-ninth. And so there'll be lots of trips to Des Moines as we have these students preparing and working with these professionals. If Will makes it through to the Triple Threat, he works with a professional director-choreographer from New York and a professional music director from New York and gets to work with them to create some of these medleys that are part of the awards program. So once we get word on those things, we'll send word uh through Bernie so that you can hear all the other things that we are doing. Brenna, you want to finish the sentence?
Hi, my name is Brenna. Um, I am very involved in theater, but something in this department that I think people tend to think of less is like the film and television aspect of acting, which is something that I'm like very interested in, very involved in. And I've had a lot of opportunities to work on like editing and filmmaking skills through this school and through this department. And so I'm also one of the social media chairs, so I was asked to make the video that is about to play. And I had a lot of fun making it and it was just another like really good opportunity to expand my skills, especially in like a different genre of more like, you know, informational, like promotional videos. So yeah, please enjoy.
My name is Noah Saxton.
Hi, I'm April Parkes.
Uh, my name's Juneau.
My name is Abigail Pence.
My name is Ricky.
My name is Julia.
Uh, my name is Gillian Garrus.
My name is Kaylee McCaw and I am TRP five-six president.
And I am our Vice President In-House.
And usually I like acting onstage.
Acting, I love the plays.
And I'm the Membership Coordinator.
And the Publicity Manager.
I also really enjoy doing um hair and makeup crew.
I usually do crew, specifically set or costumes.
My favorite experience in theater.
My favorite experience in the drama department so far?
Sitting there with all of my friends.
To work with all of my amazing friends on all of my shows.
My favorite experience was probably when we did state speech. We made it into state and everybody was really happy.
And I think my favorite thing about theater is the community and how close everyone is.
One of my favorite shows was last year we did Turnaround.
Um, but so far, my favorite experience was doing uh the Mousetrap.
It's just a great group of people.
It was such a good group of people and the vast amount of leadership opportunities that theater is able to provide our students.
My favorite experience in theater was getting to direct a show because it's an opportunity that PV has and not a lot of, not a lot of other schools in the area do have.
We have different takes on things, but in the end, we all make it blend into one, one really, really good show.
It's really interesting to be on that side of the, of the table and be able to see everything that you thought of in your mind come together and work together.
It's a really, really good experience.
When it really comes down to it, everyone is willing to work together and work hard to get something done.
One of the things that I think makes PV very special is that commitment to the arts. We do not see that in every district. And we have had an opportunity to do some amazing things. Um, it was mentioned we have Anastasia coming up, April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. That's our Spartan Spotlighters. This will be our third year doing that. There are special needs students who come and they are the leads in the show and they carry the show and they are mentored by our other drama students. It is an amazing thing to watch. The young girl who is playing Anastasia, first time we took the guide vocals away and she sang Journey to the Past by herself. And I stood there in tears and everybody was like, are you okay? And I was fine, but it is so moving to see what they bring and to give them those opportunities and to show that theater is an inclusive environment as well. This year, we also have one student who's part of that program who chose not to be on stage, who's helping backstage. So he's helping us to create the set and he's going to be on the stage crew. So we keep finding ways to be inclusive and to make sure people feel like they can come not just for that production, but for any production. And then after that, the junior high will come up and perform the first weekend in May. They're going to do their musical Captain Bree and Her Lady Pirates. And that's a great experience for us because we send high school students to do almost like a job shadow experience over at the junior high. One of them serves as the music director, one of them serves as the choreographer, so that they get the opportunity to work with the professionals that are there at the junior high and experience what those teaching experiences are like. So that's really cool. And then we will finish our year uh May sixteen and seventeen, is that right? Sorry, um, with Curious Savage, which is a beautiful piece that we'll end with in the black box and reminds us all that sometimes it's hard to say certain things, but sometimes we have to listen to what people are really saying. And as they say in the show, sometimes when people tell us, take an umbrella, it's raining, it's because that's their way of saying how much they love us. And so we wanted to take a moment to thank you for loving the theater department and loving all of these wonderful kids. I mean, it is my pleasure to work with them every day. So thank you.
You know, I think students, number one, just as you mentioned earlier, be able to find a place for everybody to, whether it's the backstage or it's the outfits, you know, the costumes and everything you do is just awesome. But then to hear all of you say that if you want to, it's a great environment that is fostered to excel. And I think all of the five of you here tonight have truly shown us how you have found ways to excel besides the walls, outside the walls of Pleasant Valley. So congratulations. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you, Christina, for all your time. I know last board meeting, we, we accepted your resignation uh from Pleasant Valley and we wish you the very, very best. And I'm trying to process in my mind now how many years you've been with Pleasant Valley, but I'm not coming up with a number right now.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. I'm glad I didn't guess.
I know every job in the theater department except costumer. I was the musical director for a while, um, the vocal director. I've been choreographer, director, technical director. So I have held everything except for costuming, which is a good thing.
And Service Learning Coordinator, how long were you in that role for us?
Four years, four and a half.
Excellent. Well, thank you to you and all you've done and to create a great environment for our kids to be a part of. It's truly amazing what our kids are doing and not just here, but when they leave us and do great things there too.
So in May, for those of you who came up and talked, what was going through my head was, I was thinking to my own job and watching people present. You guys present better than some people at my own corporation that are, you know, thirties and forty-year-olds. So, you know, the stage presence definitely plays a role in like other business life. So even if you don't end up, you know, in performing arts, you've got the skills for other roles as well. So, well done, very well done.
People are going to school for political science that are graduating this year for education. We have some that are going into theater. We have some that are going into science and medicine. I mean, so many things where they'll be able to use those skills and that teamwork and really excel.
I don't know, I'm like a huge groupie and I'm like, like shaking too, Will. You are the best. You're better SpongeBob than SpongeBob.
That's because it's follow Will everywhere. He performed at state speech. The Executive Director of the Iowa High School Speech Association came in at the end of his session and said, oh my God, you're SpongeBob. And took a picture with him. So, yes.
We'd do the same, except and Mousetrap, I was just, I was sitting next to Jason Jones, I was and, I mean, I recognize many of you from many roles over the years and thank you so much. And Will, is your most recent um competition piece posted anywhere?
Um, it is not because we're not allowed to videotape those things. It goes against copyright laws.
Maybe if you ever, you could stop by and just kind of do it.
Bring him by sometime.
It's so always great having you guys here.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Well done.
I just wanted to say one thing. You know, Mrs. My, I, uh, we did approve the consented in the last, last um board meeting, knowing that you were leaving. And if you guys don't know, Miss, Miss, Mrs. Myatt's husband Bill was also part of the theater department for a long, you're moving out of the area, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, you and your husband have proven in fact, especially in my family with my children. I think that one of the things that you, you've always, you guys have been the heart of the drama department for so many years, both you and your husband. And you've always been so encouraging and inspiring and you really let students know that every role matters, whether it's a large part or a small part. And you show how a group of kids can work together to really pull on a production. To the point where you've inspired them, like for instance, my son, he is now involved in community theater. He's actually going to be in the Cedar Rapids um production of The Mister of Edred Drood, which you guys did a few years ago um in Cedar Rapids. And so this is, these are skills that they can take on throughout their whole life. And um, you've also, I've always said that the, the stage is the three Cs. It's a place to show um there's courage, there's creativity, and there is connection. And you guys have demonstrated that so well. So um, you've also shown that, you know, students can find voices not just on the stage, but actually in life as well. And those are really hard um skills to train and you and your husband have done an amazing job of doing that. So um, you're leaving um Pleasant Valley with a legacy and there will always be a spotlight on you here. But I just want to wish you all your retirement and as they say in um, when you go on stage, break a leg in retirement. So thank you again for all that you and your husband have done and um, you leave some pretty um wide-open
It'll be the first time in thirty-five years that there's not been a Myatt associate with the drama department.
Again, for all the generations of students that you, you guys have inspired.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. This thespian went into business.
There you go.
Well, I, listening to you all tonight just brought back a lot of memories and you'll have your memories with you the rest of your life. I thought about my individual speech contest, my group contests, uh, the drama, um, the plays, uh, and, and especially my teacher. Um, so just wonderful memories that, that theater and uh drama and carry with you through your life. So I'm, I'm so glad to see uh all the opportunity that you guys have had and that you've taken advantage of and all the friends you made. It's just, it's really, um, really heartfelt to hear all that. All right, thanks, guys. All right, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda, which includes approval of minutes, personnel changes, and updated personnel cooperative teaching agreement, and then also the EICC agreement. Um, are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If there are none, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to Approval of Bills, General Fund?
I move the General Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers, that General Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition Fund?
I move that the Nutrition Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that Nutrition Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund?
I move that Elementary Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Kunkel, that Elementary Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? High School Activity Fund?
I move that High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of sixty thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwishe, second by Director Ayers, that High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Management Fund?
I move that Management Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second. Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that Management Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me. Uh, Capital Projects Fund?
I move the Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirteen thousand ninety-three dollars and eleven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Canwishe, that Capital Project Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pepple Fund, Physical Plant and Equipment Levy?
I move the Pepple Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogle, second by Director Kunkel, that Pepple Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Construction Fund?
I move that the Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six hundred and six dollars and sixty-one cents in payment of invoices
I move that the student construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of six hundred and six dollars and sixty-one cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, that construction fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal service fund.
I move that internal service fund warrant sixty-six forty-two to sixty-six forty-four, and ACH thirty-two seventy-four through thirty-two seventy-seven, be issued in the total amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Canwisheer, second by Director Ayers, that internal service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And trust fund.
Move that trust fund warrants be issued in a total amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Wogle, that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have no old business, so we will move on to new business and the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six certified personnel contract approval.
So, I'll go ahead and begin with this tonight, and then I'll turn over to Mike, and we'll kind of go back and forth in terms of negotiations. Last Thursday night, our teachers' union, PBA ratified amongst their members that they accepted the negotiation that we have talked about. Negotiations this year consisted of three different meetings. We met for two hours one night, four for another meeting, and then we finished up last week, last Wednesday, in two-hour session there as well. Overall, I would say with where we are at and what we're dealing with, I was very proud of our teachers as to how we work together again through IBPS process. It really is a very transparent, open discussion dialogue when it comes to negotiations. Just a reminder, how we do this, Mike kicks off, well, actually, we kick off with is we have about ten questions we ask ourselves in terms of when it comes to negotiations. When we get done in the end, can we raise thumbs and say, yes, we come to consensus? And that could be anything around, is it fair? Is it legal? Is it competitive? It's those type of questions we ask ourselves, and when we get done, we feel like we have developed a good package that is fair for everybody. You know, this year, the new money, which Mike will go through in just a minute, was, well, I shouldn't say, it appears it will be two percent SSA this year for us. It has not been signed into law, but the House and the Senate have agreed upon that already. So, we were kind of using that all along from the very beginning, that that was maybe the number we'd work with, and so we did. As Mike will go through, I'll let him kind of explain how we take that money and break it down, which is one of the attachments that you have in your document. So, I'll let Mike work through that piece, and then I'll come back and explain some more things as well.
All right, what I have up on the screen here is the first attachment that was in your board packet. And what this page does is it shows step by step for the teacher's package how we came to the one point six eight percent total package increase. So, again, that's what it was this year, is a one point six eight percent total package increase. And again, total package includes everything, salary and all benefits, including FICA, IPRs, health insurance, dental insurance, and all of the various benefits.
So, that's what we agreed upon was the one point six eight.
So, our starting point each year is our budgeted total package cost from the current fiscal year. So, you see on line one here, the total teacher's package for this year was thirty-seven million one hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred, excuse me, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. The first, next thing that we do on line two here is we estimate how much we are gonna save from the replacements that are hired for the people who have either retired or resigned during this fiscal year. So, at the time that we settled, we had seven, we had six retirees, people who were retiring at the end of this school year, and then eleven people who have resigned at the end of this school year, or some of them might have happened during the school year. Then what we do is for the people who have not hired a replacement for you, we have to make a projection as to where they're gonna, where their replacement would be at on the salary schedule. And so, we classify them as either low, medium, or high on the salary schedule. Low, for low, we use step six on our salary schedule, and lane two, which would be a BA plus ten additional credits. For medium on the salary schedule, we use step ten in lane four, which would be a master's degree. And for high on the salary schedule, we use step fourteen in lane six, which would be a master's plus twenty credits on the salary schedule. So, if we don't know the replacement yet, that's what we do, we estimate where the, where the replacement would be on the salary schedule. And then we also have to estimate whether they would take single or family insurance. And what we normally do there is we, normally in the district, we have about two-thirds of our staff that take family insurance and about one-third that takes single insurance. So, we try to make it approximately equal to that two-thirds, one-thirds ratio if we don't know what insurance the people are taking. Now, for, for some of the positions, for the retirees and resignations, at the time we settled, we did have replacements already hired. So, in that case, we use the actual step in lane of the person who is hired to replace the retiree or the resignation. And then again, if we know what their insurance is gonna be, we use their actual single or family insurance. If we don't know, again, we try to make it work out to the two-thirds, one-third split. So, our projection for this year was that we would save two hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars from the replacements of the retirees and the resignations. So, you can see that brought it down to a negative point six zero percent total package increase. Line three on here is an important one. For the third year in a row, the district had no increase in our health insurance premiums for next year. Remember, we went back to self-funded three years ago. Yeah, three years ago. And so, like I say, for the third year in a row, we've been fortunate to have no increase on our premiums for health insurance. That did not add anything to the total package cost.
You know, I would just say on that, again, when that happens, again, we are really trying to work with our employees to understand how they have ownership of our insurance. So, the choices we make on every single day is what drives our costs. So, if we can save money by using doctor on demand or using prescription, generic prescriptions, those are things we are clearly communicating all the time and trying to find different ways to have our insurance be great for our employees, but yet, the cost savings from their standpoint too. So, very proud of the work they do there.
And you highlighted that in the welcome back this year, I remember, and I remember thinking, it's incredible. To do it two years in a row is kind of mind-boggling to me, so I hope you repeat the message again this year, because it's amazing.
It is, and we're also gonna be changing our EAP, which offers more things for our staff as well, to hopefully help them to feel healthier and be at work. We're adding vision insurance, which is no cost to us if they would like that. So, again, we're just trying to find ways to have a healthier staff, which then impacts our kids in the classroom.
The next line on here, row number four then, is our dental insurance. We had a relatively small increase, a one point four nine percent increase on our dental insurance for next year. That cost is four thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, so that brings us to a negative point five nine percent total package increase. Lines five and six, line five is the life AD&amp;D insurance, and line six is the long-term disability insurance. We had no increase in the premiums for that, those insurance coverages for next year. Both of those are a hundred percent paid for by the district, but we had no rate increase for next year on those. Line number seven, what we traditionally do in the district when we're doing the negotiations, is we use thirty lane changes to project the cost of lane changes. What a lane change is, if you're not familiar with that, is on our salary schedule, if you move from, for example, BA to the BA plus ten lane. So, it's if you get, if a teacher gets additional education credits to advance their education, that's what the lane change is. So, again, traditionally, we project on here thirty lane changes, that would cost sixty thousand nine hundred and two dollars. So, that would have brought it up to a negative point four three percent total package increase. The next thing that we do is we increase the longevity, traditionally, the multipliers for longevity by a half a percent. So, a point five percent, it's actually a point five percent. So, that costs thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, brings us up to a negative point three three percent total package increase. Then, we have on our salary schedule, some cells that we have to kind of manually adjust each year to make sure that somebody in a lane further to the right is not making less money than somebody who has less education but is on the same step, a lane further to the left. So, there's about, I think, seven or eight of those spots on our salary schedule where we have to do that. That costs seven thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars, brings it to a negative point three one percent total package increase. Then, row ten is advancing everybody one step on the salary schedule. That is the big cost item when we're costing out the total package. That cost this year was five hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. So, that brought it up to a positive one point one seven percent total package increase. And we'll talk a little bit more about that advancing people one step on the salary schedule in a minute or two here. The next row, row eleven on here, is the unique thing that we did this year, that we have only done one other time, at least since I've been here at Pleasant Valley. Back in the two thousand ten-eleven fiscal year was the year the state had an across-the-board budget cut. That year, we reduced the non-longevity multipliers by point zero two two percent in order to save the district money that year because of the across-the-board budget cuts. Well, this year, one of the, we actually gave the teachers three different options related to this. One option was just doing things the way we normally do it, where everybody advances a step on the salary schedule, and we do not touch the multipliers, we leave the multiplier, except for the people who have reached longevity, which we would have added to their multipliers on that step up above where we increased longevity by point five percent. But the other options we gave the teachers were doing like we did back in the two thousand ten-eleven fiscal year, where we reduced the multipliers by point zero two two, the non-longevity multipliers. And then the other option we gave them was reducing the multipliers by point zero four four, double that. And that is the option that they ended up choosing that they wanted to have happen, was reducing the multipliers in the non-longevity steps by point zero four four. So, that actually reduced the cost of the total package by thirty-seven million, excuse me, by two hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and one dollars to bring it to, at that point, to a cumulative total of thirty-seven million two sixty-six nine oh three, the point three seven percent total package increase. And then the last step, line twelve, is the increase to the generator base. By lowering those multipliers by point zero four four, that allowed us to put much more onto the index generator base. So, we were able to increase the base by five hundred and fifteen dollars. That was a cost of four hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, which brought the total package up to the one point six eight percent total package increase and a cost for the teachers' agreement of six hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars.
So, one of the reasons why we gave them three options this year was with our new money at, which came out to one point two four percent for us because of our enrollment numbers. So, the money we got from the state was about five hundred and forty-two, five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Well, when you take that and you see what it costs to advance everybody on one step, that pretty much depleted a lot of that money already. So, we had some questions about what does that look like? So, we decided for this year, one year, we'll try, just like we back in two thousand ten-eleven, we reduce the multiplier. What that really did was it more equitably took all that money that we received from the state and gave it more equitably across everybody, whether you were a beginning teacher or an experienced teacher, where if you were on the other end of it, you would have had a much lower, or much less raise than what this did. By doing this, we said it's a one-year try this year, but they also know we're gonna form a helping committee starting in the spring, this summer, so that come a year from now, we would walk into negotiations looking at how we've always done it based upon the money we get from the state, or we will be introducing an alternative salary structure, which you're starting to see happen across the state of Iowa. And what it really does is it gets rid of your lanes and steps and creates more of a tier system to equally, equally take that money and spread it across everybody in the organization. So, this really, lowering the multiplier kind of set us up for that type of a salary structure next year, because if us continue to get two percent across this board, it's very difficult to move forward a salary structure like we are used to, because you, this just costs too much. So, that was one of the things that we really talked about this year, that, you know, the next step is what that resulted in.
So, the next attachment that was in your board packet is the actual teacher salary schedule for next year, the two thousand twenty-five, six year. So, you can see up towards the top here is the base salary index base. By increasing it by the five, what was it, five hundred and?
Fifteen.
Yeah, five hundred and fifteen dollars from what it was this year. That brings the index base up to thirty-five thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Then, the other thing we have to take into consideration is TSS, the teacher salary supplement dollars. One thing that we're dealing with this year on that is the state has still not finalized how much we are gonna be getting for next year on TSS teacher salary supplement dollars. And we have been told that they might not give us the final figure on that until June. So, that made it challenging, one of the things that made it challenging this year is not knowing our final number for how much we're gonna receive in TSS. But based on the latest estimates that they had given us, that's what we used to come up with our TSS index distribution base and our TSS equal distribution amount for next year. So, the TSS index base for next year would be seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, and the TSS equal distribution amount for next year would be six thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, on our salary schedule for next year, we had one cell in our salary schedule, this very first one in the upper left-hand corner, the BA in step one through four, meaning if we hire somebody who has one to four years of experience, they start on that step one through four. And if they have a BA, they start in the BA lane. That particular cell was below the state required fifty thousand dollars for next year. That is the only cell that we had on our salary schedule that was below the state required minimums. So, we had to, again, this year, use some of our money that we are receiving from TSS to increase that step up to including TSS, the fifty thousand dollar minimum salary.
So, that's why you see the ten thousand two thirteen versus the other ones being at six thousand six seventy-eight.
Then, what we did for this next year is because we brought that minimum salary up to fifty thousand dollars, it was really compacting the next couple spots on the salary schedule to the right of that, and three more spots on the salary schedule below step one through four. So, again, the letter A here that I have in the parentheses was to get that step to fifty thousand dollars. The letter B that I have on these two spots on the salary schedule, the step one through four BA plus ten, and the step five BA lane, were to get, what we tried to do is make it approximately an equal separation between BA, BA plus ten, BA plus twenty, and MA. So, you can see what we did is there's a six hundred and nineteen dollar increase between BA step one through four and BA plus ten step one through four, then another six hundred and nineteen dollar difference between the BA plus ten step one through four and the BA plus twenty step one through four, and then also a six hundred and nineteen dollar difference between the BA plus twenty step one to four and the MA step one through four. So, we, it was really compacting the difference between those. So, that's why we, you can see those particular spots in the salary schedule also would be getting more than the six thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the equal TSS money. And so, that's what we did also for step five in the BA and BA plus ten lane, and step six in the BA lane, to make a more equal separation between those spots in the salary schedule. So, all of this is paid for with the TSS money that we're receiving. We did not have to use any of our other general fund money to pay to do that, so. We're fortunate, because there's a lot, well, I shouldn't say a lot, there's a number of districts in the state who have many more cells that were below the required minimums. And here at PB, we just have the one spot on the salary schedule that we had to get up to the required minimum.
And just for B, if you're new, remember when we hire someone at step one? And just for B, if you're new, remember when we hire someone at step one through four, they stay there one year for us. Their second year with us, they automatically jump to step five, so they're not frozen at that one for four years, it's slide over.
Any questions? Salary schedule.
So from a layman's viewpoint, the staff got a one point six eight percent raise on SMB salary and benefits, right?
Correct.
Last year's US inflation rate was two point nine percent. Even social security folks got a cost of living adjustment of two point five percent. I guess, great job by you all trying to sort out what little the state gave us, super disappointing. The state isn't really showing a supportive public education despite its state. So especially reshuffling those pages when I wrote you a note about that, TSS, thanks for explaining that and.
Sure.
Sort of flattening the shirt out, thank you.
And I think that's why when we look at the option of lowering the multiplier, it tried to help everybody in a tough time. I mean, just things are going up and not to get a very big raise, I mean, it's tough. All of us, you feel that every, every job you're in, so, and you're trying to be fair.
We're gonna cover tiers some other time?
Uh, we will, yes, yep, most definitely.
Well, I can ask it later after you're done with this. Um, I, I mean, I, I'm gonna thank all of you for this and, you know, thank the teachers as well who. Understand the situation that we're dealing with and a lot of this is somewhat out of our control when it's the legislature deciding what's happening. But as Doug has mentioned, you know, the fact that one point sixteen percent, why not? It's going up at two point five percent and the cost of living is higher than that is, is disappointing. To our district and to a public education, um, to all of our public education in our state. And I understand why legislation, legislators don't understand that. But the question I was gonna ask is, we got lucky because of the health insurance. That is not going to occur every year. So I'm just gonna ask the question, let's say that, 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 that our self-funded insurance premiums increased. Let's say the average increase is around two to three percent even, let's say that that happened. Can you give me just a little bit of a, um, a little window as to what we will be having to do, just so that I, I know?
Okay, we'll start with that one.
Well, I think one of the, one of the things that we would need to do, that, that's another reason for going into the alternative salary schedule. Because, um, again, with the alternative salary schedule. That, um. Advancing people a step as we do it the way we do it right now is what takes up so much cost of our new money. So by going to an, an alternative salary schedule, we would be able to divide the money more evenly. Not have the, just advancing everybody one step take up so much of our new money. And so hopefully that would also allow us to absorb a larger increase in the health insurance, that's.
That's what I would say, what do you? Boy, remember, our health insurance right now, if we, if it increases our employees. I do as an employee, we pick up the extra cost. Cause we've frozen what the district is putting towards it, so what really would happen is, anything that a teacher would make in their raise. Would be eaten up by their insurance, you might ask, why do we do that? Because right now, the more we can give them in a raise, long-term helps them from an IPR standpoint. So if insurance goes up, they're gonna see a huge decrease in their raise, but theoretically. They're getting a raise, but there's offsetting the raise to pay their insurance, so. That's where I'm from, so it'd just be a hit on all of us who have insurance with the district.
Exactly, so in other words, that's good, we had to do that, they'd probably be getting even less of, maybe even less of a raise, but. You know, all eaten up in healthcare costs, essentially no extra for living expenses.
Correct, I mean, that if, that is a reality with health insurance right now, I mean, in some districts we've talked to have, I mean, two and three can be very low.
Yes, oh yeah, that's a concern.
Eight is sometimes kind of what people are seeing more average or higher, so. That is something we are very, again, very thankful, very aware of and looking at, again. Man's been asking good questions in our, in health insurance meetings with our cons, con, uh consultants, like what can we keep doing? To try to be successful, so a lot of things we're looking at there.
And the only thing that others struck me was also that, you know, you, you take a BA and steps one through four, fifty thousand dollars because of the law. And then you look at our sta, our step for an MA, I mean masters with thirty years of experience, right? At step twenty, that's at ninety-two thousand, am I correct there?
Yes.
It's because we don't go over twenty years.
Yeah, so that's a forty, only a forty-two thousand dollar difference in thirty years of. With a master's degree, so that's range, am I correct there, am I reading that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just want people to know that that's the range we're dealing with. A masters, thirty years of experience and they top out at ninety-two thousand.
And the good, I mean, we're fortunate that that's what our teachers get because a lot of them around the state. Would be wishing there at that number there, so we're very fortunate in that regard too. So Mike, do you wanna go through the next page and then I'll pick up?
There was one other comment I meant to make, which was, I do appreciate that the state actually funded the TSS work. Instead of making it an unfunded mandate, so that part of it, I appreciate that they did take that angle, you know, for us it was not as big an impact, but I'm sure other districts have a much larger impact.
Alright, this next document is one that we shared with the teachers. That shows our use of how, how we use the new money that we're getting from the state. So again, this reflects the one point six eight percent total package increase on our agreement. Uh, based on two percent SSA, the five hundred and fifteen dollar increase to the teacher index base. And the reduction in the non-longevity multipliers by point zero four four. So our new money, starting on the line here where it says two thousand twenty-five twenty-six, new money. At two percent supplemental state aid. Our new money for next year was five hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Or a one point two four percent new money. Our certified enrollment for the year went down by about forty students, so that's why even though SSA was two percent. Our new money in the district for next year was only one point two four percent. So that's the first line that we start with. The next line shows an addition of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. And that reflects the district basically using ten more students. Of our open enrollment surplus to help add additional. Kind of revenue in to what the new money is that we got from the state, because the new money from the state. Again, was so low this year, um, we just, this, this is a risk because what we're doing is. Well, how, how much is our open enrollment surplus currently?
Uh, we are just about a hundred and twenty, if you keep going, I'll find it exactly.
Alright, so a year ago, we had used fifty students of our open enrollment surplus. In a similar manner as what we're doing for next year. Um, we decided this year to use an additional ten, so now we're basically using sixty of our. Surplus in open enrollment to help supplement the new money that we're getting from the state. The risk of course on that is, it could go back the other way like it used to be a few years ago. Where we have more students open enrolled out than open enrolled in, if we get in that situation, we're gonna have to do something different, so.
Yeah, so at the start of the school year, we were at a hundred and twenty-two open enrolled to the positive side. From what we had in previously, this is about the third or fourth year enrollment, we've been in the positive. So as Mike said, using fifty last year, ten more this year, we're trying to say that. Now moving forward, that's sixty of those students that we are always in our budget. Um, so we, uh, it's kind of that risk area of, okay, we're gonna guarantee we're always gonna have sixty. If you don't, then you're gonna be reducing staff at some point because just wanna have the kids there, so we built that in, in this fashion.
Then the next line on here, and I'm gonna let Brian, um, talk a little bit more about this, is savings from two no- fill first grade positions. That is a savings of a hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars. So if you add that hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars to the seventy-nine eight thirty and our new, actual new money of five hundred and. Four, five hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, that would leave seven hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and eight dollars to work with.
You wanna talk about the first grade now or do you wanna wait till? Let me come back to that one.
Alright, alright, so then what I do is, um, recalling that very first page that was in the board packet that I talked about. The total cost of the teachers' package at a one point six eight percent increase was six hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. So you have to subtract that off from the seven hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Then, we traditionally over the past several years have done the same total package increase. For all employee groups at the district as what we do for the teachers. So if, if we do all other employee groups in the district at a one point six eight percent total pa, one point six eight percent total package increase. That costs two hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. You can see it says not including food service because food service does not come out of the general fund, it actually comes out of the nutrition fund. So that's why it's not included.
One point six eight for them too.
Correct. Um, another thing we're looking at for next year is adding an additional twenty-six and a half percent coaching stipends for next year. The cost of that would be ten thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, so you subtract that off also. So you can see at that point, we're already in a deficit. Even after adding the ten open enrolled students and the no- fill first grade positions to the new money. We're at a deficit of ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Then we come to the bottom part of the sheet, do you wanna take?
Yep, I got that for you. So jumping back to what Mike said at first grade, we had two no- fill positions because of a retirement in first grade. At Pleasant View, we had a retirement at, or a resignation at Hopewell, so there was two first grade positions. Um, when going through, those are two positions that we quite, or we're questioning quite extensively about, you know, should we do this, should we keep them? What does that look like based upon the other new positions you see down below, so. After that line where Mike just showed the ninety-four thousand, you can see here one through six are the new positions we are adding. So one of them is an elementary dean, it is listed as Cody Bridgeview. Um, we're meeting tomorrow with the principals to review that again, is it Cody Bridgeview or is it Cody, you know, is there different combinations, so we'll talk about that tomorrow. With our principals, uh, but we would be adding an elementary dean, so Bridgeview for sure has. A dean in their building, whether it's half-time or full-time, where we land in that, but stay tuned for that, that'll be a new position. Junior high assistant principal, because of our growth in numbers there, we're gonna take one of our deans, move it to the assistant principal, so that's a cost, you can see there about fourteen thousand dollars. Making that a full year-round contract versus the, oh, two hundred and some day contract that they had right now. District custodian with the addition at the high school, adding up with the square footage, needing something there. Remember our big bubble right now is about fifth, fourth, fifth grade, and those kids are moving through right now. So our high school is in need of an English teacher, a business teacher, and a PE teacher. Um, so those are ones that we are all adding at this time, so you can see the cost of that was three hundred and seventy-one thousand forty-eight dollars. Um, putting us at the negative there of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, during negotiations, one of the biggest things we talked about with our teachers was the two first grade positions. And they're like, we need to keep those first grade positions, and I'm like, we just can't. And I said, this is a situation where we are at with the numbers of students that we have in our seats right now. And the way enrollment has been the last three years, we have more open seats than we need. And I said to him at that point, I said, you know, we wanna do this in the most respectful way possible and we try to do it through attrition. And as I've shared with you before, you're looking at how do we take for the next five, six years? Retirements, resignations, when those things come available, you have teachers who could fill that from internal. So you're not adding people in, in five years, you're saying we have to cut somebody and they don't have a job now. So it's trying to look at this, and it's not easy, and it's not, asking someone to move to a new position is not a fun thing to do. Cause it's a change, it is a huge change. But when they were asking about first grade, I said, okay, I've tried to shi, shield you from this long enough, and I showed the kindergarten numbers. Our kindergarten numbers right now are lower than our first, our current kindergarten numbers. And I said, in all reality, we should be reducing two, if not, I mean, three would be super tight. Three, three, we cannot do, but two positions, so to put this in perspective, our ki, our first grade class right now. Current first graders, we have eighty open seats across the district. At a class size of twenty-four is our seat capacity. So eighty, you take away forty-eight of that, you still have close to, what is that? Forty, not quite forty there, yeah, well, thirty-two still available for other positions, so that's one thing.
That's first grade?
First grade right now. Eighty open seats.
Across the whole district.
Across the whole district. And so we're looking at class, again, this is numbers from earlier, so I mean, things can change on a daily basis. But our current first grade, we would average, Ridgeview has sixteen or seventeen, they have a low class this year in first grade. But everyone else is in that nineteen, twenty, or twenty-one kids in a classroom across the district. This year's kindergarten class, we have sixty-four open seats. Would you remember twenty-two kids, so we have sixty-four, so you would, you, you take two out, you're, that's forty-four. You're still sitting with twenty open seats across the district, okay, for this year's kindergarten. Right now, at this year's to-be kindergarten class, we're thirty-eight open enrollments. And this will grow, we know it'll grow between now and the start of the year. If we keep things exactly as it is right now, we have eighty-seven open seats in kindergarten.
For next year.
For next year, now, one more, that's eighty-eight, right? Well, twenty-two times four is eighty-eight. So what happened was, in the last three years, so that puts us right now, if we drop kindergarten down by two sections. Drop it down by two, we would still have forty-three seats available across the district. Now, you go to second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. We're at thirty-seven seats, forty-six seats, thirty-five seats, eighteen seats, and forty-nine seats. So typically, we try to land in that thirty-five to forty kind of cushion because it gives all of our schools a couple extra seats or a seat here or there. For movement, so right now, our kindergarten next year would be at forty-three with two less teachers. So we have space, and we still have a sixth grade, a sixth, a sixth grade at Riverdale, a sixth grade at Cody, and a fifth grade at. Um, no, sorry, Cody six, Riverdale Heights sixth, and Co, Forest Grove, thank you Tony. Forest Grove has a fifth grade, so we have three positions open. So right now, we're working with our staff, trying to find, I, and I said, I told them, kindergarten to sixth or fifth is a huge jump. I would never ask a teacher to make that huge of a jump. We also have a couple of third grade openings right now that are filled with brand-new teachers who haven't started with us. That could take a kindergarten teacher to a third grade position, and it's not a huge of a jump. But the bottom line is, financially speaking, those two kindergarten positions. Saves us a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. We just got five hundred thousand dollars from the state, almost two hundred thousand dollars is coming back in kindergarten. So, it's probably the first time I've ever said in this chair, I feel like unfortunately I'm treating our profession like a business. I don't have another choice, because what we're doing is we're having too many open seats. That at twenty-two is our cap, what we're sitting there right now, again, like I said, those numbers. Sixteen, seventeen, maybe eighteen in the class across the district. So I completely understand, I've, it's, it's difficult. But I feel like after three years, we've been holding off kindergarten because it's on the hope that you're gonna see the number come back. It might, and if it does, you hire a teacher back between now and the start of the year. But right now, so when you look at that and you see that, with all those numbers Mike just shared, putting the one eighty-four eighteen back in. We have a deficit of two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars is where we settled at. So, two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars negative in the checkbook to start next school year. Now, we will look for ways that doesn't have that big of an impact on us to save, but if you don't take. First grade positions or the kindergarten positions, take your pick, but that two eighty-one just jumps by another hundred and fifty, another hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so by doing this, we came back to our staff and we said this to our teachers. If we stayed traditional on what we did, we knew it, a fifty dollars on the base, giving our teachers fifty dollars. Was a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar deficit. By not filling the two kindergarten teachers, it bumped that fifty dollars to two hundred dollars on the base. With only twelve thousand dollars more at a cost, because we changed the multiplier. And adding in the hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, that took it from fifty dollars to two hundred dollars. We also came back and said, here's a seventy-five dollars in the base, here's two twenty-five on the base. And after negotiations, our. And after negotiations, our teachers. And we averaged thirty five to forty people in negotiations, they came back not with the two twenty five, but the two hundred. They were willing to go with the the deficit that you see there versus a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deficit, so they understood the impact of it. And they understood that, as difficult it is as a district, PK twelve. The importance of having to look at these positions. So when people, I think the concern is hearing that, oh, we're we're looking at reducing two kindergarten positions, our class sizes are gonna grow. I can tell you, on average, if we stay the way we are right now, our class sizes would be at seventeen or eighteen across the district in kindergarten. By removing the two, not filling those two kindergarten positions, it goes to nineteen or twenty. So we're still below the twenty two across the district. And we will not go over twenty two in any other building, we'll stay at that, so. I will guarantee chances are Pleasant View and Hopewell between now will probably hit that sixty six number maybe. But if anyone else comes in like we always do, whether it's open enrollment to another school or another student may go to another school for a year or so. You know, movement will have those things, but we would not go over class size, like we don't in any other building, if it hits twenty four, we find the next closest school. We know those things. But having this many positions open or seats open is just, it's difficult from that standpoint.
Can I make sure I understand?
Yes.
So the two first grade positions are on hold, not gonna fill.
Correct.
Now we're also looking at two kindergarten, we we have two resignations, we haven't decided if we're filling them or not.
No, no, the two kindergartens will be moving two people out of a current position into another position somewhere. PK twelve.
Okay.
Because we still have three open general seats, two sixth grade teachers and a fifth grade teacher.
Okay.
So that is, so we've, yes, we've put on hold right now, filling any of those positions. Until internally, we can figure out how we're gonna move teachers from Pleasant View and Hopewell. And you might ask why those two schools, the reason is because in first grade right now, those are the two where we're taking a first grade teacher out. So now go a year behind in kindergarten, so those are three section, next following year, a year from now. Those three sections slide into the current three sections at first grade, and then every year, you're always looking at moving a. Teacher, second grade teacher, third grade teacher, fourth grade, as long as you only need three sections. That's where we looked at from now till thirty thirty two. Where are we at with po- position, uh possible resignations or retirements that could come out? From teachers in that next future year, so again, you're trying to do this all through attrition. Never pink slipping someone and saying, you don't have a job and you have to leave our district. Trying to be respectful as much as possible with people, but still trying to be economically sound in the decision making that we're doing. I mean, would I, would we love to have class sizes of sixteen, seventeen, a hundred percent you would. But twenty two, we're blessed to be at twenty two and twenty four for class sizes.
So during the negotiations, when that group was pushing back on the two first grade positions, was was that pushback? In lieu of the dean or what, was there a conflict on their side of of not supporting the dean but wanting to support two? Adding two first grade?
So there was, yeah, there was conversations about, do you not fill the dean another year? And put that money that was towards the dean, which is about exactly the same as the two first grade positions, which we could. But then we had conversations about, we've been pushing that dean off at Bridgeview for a number of years. And the thing you always hear is, teachers always want an administrator in the building. And so Megan unfortunately is the only one, when she gets pulled here, there's never an administrator in that building, cause there's not a dean. So getting that position filled, and that's where we came back and said, hey, we've got to agree in this one, what's best for everybody is. Keeping that position there. Now again, like I said, we're meeting again tomorrow to say, is it a Bridgeview Cody split, is it a Forest Grove, co- whatever that combination is, we'll talk more about that tomorrow.
Well, and I I think the other point to make on that for you is, while there may have been pushback on the dean to keep the first grade. There was no data to justify keeping the first grade positions, eh, the class sizes aren't there, so. That while there may have been some consideration on their part, when we got into. The last one where we started talking about kindergarten and we really started showing the numbers and how this trickle down will happen. There wasn't even pushback on the kindergarten at that point in time, because they saw that the data supported where we were headed, so.
I can see the op- the optics from an outsider's perspective or from the. From the union's perspective of like, why are you gonna support an administrative position versus, you know, like that, that makes sense.
Also hard to justify is when we know the money we're receiving. And you're reducing, say, four sections at an elementary, but you're adding three new positions at the high school. And so we've, we had to talk about that too, because in five or six years, you could be looking at junior high and saying, where are we at numbers? Now, the three hundred is what we were used to ten years ago, or three, I should say, three forty, three fifty. And we started seeing kids, you had junior high, that numbers would start to grow back again, so. I don't know where this trend's gonna go, there's a lot of factors for it, but the reality is, this is where we're at today. And I hope we can add back a teacher, maybe before the end of the year, but right now, this is just where we're at, so. The number you see up there would include that. And that is why, again, the two first grade positions were easy, can say easy, but we did, we had retirement resignation. Kindergarten got tougher because you'd have to move two people to a different location. Now, we do have options where they could potentially stay within their own school at a different grade level, so they're still with the same team, the same staff they've been with. Those are the things we'll work with staff through, um and try to do this in the best way possible.
And you will have enough, um, that accounts, it sounds like it counts for any, um, like. New families moving to the area where, you know, they can get into their homeschool and not have. Seats and have to go to a school outside of there.
The only one where that could happen, I'll tell you right now, could be Hopewell and Pleasant View, that could happen. Now, which has happened multiple times before, and Bridgeview, Bridgeview, remember I told you Bridgeview was low at sixteen? They're tied at forty four right now, they are closed unless something moved in the last couple days, MSW the last couple days, but they were at forty four, so. When they had the sixteen in first grade, sixteen, seventeen in kindergarten, they're now twenty two, twenty two. So I I could see Hopewell and. Pleasant View being that same way, but again, with Bridgeview closed, kids go to Cody, super easy, shouldn't say super easy, but that's where we transport them to. If you have a school closed on this side, say, Pleasant View and Hopewell, you've got Forest Grove, you've got Riverdale Heights. So you still have two schools on this side that can take additional students, so. Always trying to be fair to everybody when they're coming into the district is what this looks like.
So when you talk about the eighty, you know, the eighty open and the sixty four open, it's across the district, right?
Yes.
Did you, did you, I mean, you're kinda giving us a little bit of a window of that, but what, is it very lopsided? From like Bridgeview Cody versus the other three, or is it pretty much. Pretty consistent amongst all the elementary schools and the amount.
So.
And places.
Yeah, so right now, I mean, we have thirty eight open enrolled kids to place. That Debbie and I will work through as to what schools they will go to, make those phone calls. Just me kinda randomly placing them in certain spots right now, you could have Bridgeview, I told you, they'd be closed at twenty two, twenty two. Cody could be at eighteen, Forest Grove at twenty, Hopewell at twenty and twenty one. Pleasant View at twenty one and Riverdale Heights at seventeen. Now, again, more open enrollment kids could go to Riverdale Heights, so that number would grow up at that point, but you're looking at pretty much across the board. Twenties, twenty one, I mean, there. That is the thing, when you go back and look at the other years, I told you, it's, we try to balance that out across, so it's not this huge disparity. I mean, it could happen from year to year, um, one year Bridgeview is tight and Cody's smaller, I mean, that, it happens. But we really try to use open enrollment now to kinda balance those numbers, so like, one school's not getting hit. I can tell you, last year, Hopewell. Our current kindergarten class right now, they had fifty two seats of kids in their attendance area out of eighty eight. So there's eighteen open enrolled kids at Hopewell this year, to get them up in that range that was more comparable to other schools. Why is that? Well, neighborhoods age at times, Hopewell's seen that aging right now. Where kids started there in elementary, now they're junior high or now they're high school. So the houses available for elementary kids aren't as plentiful as they were at one time. So those are all dynamics, you just don't know. So it's how do you balance this?
So I appreciate the decision making here, um, as you talk through it, you know, you've said, I don't wanna be a business leader, but I mean, you have to write just like. You have to follow the numbers, and wherever the capacity is, that's where you need, wherever the demand is, that's where you need the capacity, so moving folks. You said you actually had no option, you did have an option, you talked about at the beginning, which is, I can lay people off over here and hire them over here. Nobody wants that, I don't think, so this like real election. I don't see how you have another alternative to do it, so it makes a lot of sense to me. I appreciate covering especially the classroom sizes, especially for the few schools that include my constituents.
Thank you.
So at what point do we have to place the open enrollment kids?
We usually tell them by June first ish. He's very patient.
Gets through you.
If you're calling about this.
So really, I mean, June is gonna be an important timeframe, because we'll have kindergarten roundup done and we'll also. Place.
Tony always says by opening or by kindergarten registration, we have about ninety three percent of our kids that attend are probably where they're going to be at that point.
We've been monitoring that since we started the kindergarten screening, which is beneficial too, because it motivates to get enrolled. But, um, that's a, that surprised me in a positive manner. That ninety three percent of our kindergartners who attend kindergarten roundup actually end up attending. On August twenty third, or whatever our first day of school is for kindergarten, I mean, they're ready to come. So that's a really high number percentage. And that's good to have that predicted.
So.
So, so you were saying that in general, so during the meeting that you guys had last week, um, they saw all of this, the teachers.
Cause it's all been explained.
And then, and so they knew that there would be an elimination of the first grader and the two first grade teachers. And the two, um, kindergartners, and with that, they were able to do the two hundred number, like you mentioned, for the entire. For for the whole staff, so they were, they were willing to kind of. Reduce the, reduce those spots so that everybody of the whole got a little higher.
Yes, and.
Yes.
Correct, and then I always use the two hundred number, when they chose the one that we were reducing the multipliers, it moved that two hundred dollars to five fifteen. And there was no difference in the deficit then at that point.
Still one point six eight percent total.
Yeah, still one point six eight, so spreading it out.
I would say, I don't think that they were okay with eliminating the two kindergarten positions. I think when they saw the data and they recognized that we don't have the ability to justify class sizes of ten or twelve when we have twenty here. It was just the inevitable that this is the road we have to go as a district, and so. Yes, it got absorbed into the salary money that we had for them, but I don't think it was more, it wasn't about, yeah, we're willing to let go of this. So that we can get more money, it was, this is just the way that the district is gonna have to go for us to be successful next year and the year after. And so they they accepted that that was the decision as a district we really, really needed to head.
And there's been times we've reduced from a four section to a three section building, or we had a four section one time and we did a five section, it just depends upon kids. And what happens, and like I said, I hope we add this back in, but we'll see, I don't know how else to explain it.
I guess over the last couple of years, you know, since you were looking, giving us the numbers, those class sizes are, have been smaller. I think people are used to these smaller classes, and I think that there's a lot of arguments you made, that even though we have a twenty two limit. Smaller class size is always gonna be better, there's more teacher to student interaction. Especially for those with special needs, there could be more attention with a student versus having a class of twenty two capacity. If you've been having sixteen students, a lot different than having an additional six students. Um, and I think that maybe there's been a lot of people who have experienced that now, that they're like, that now this, they become uneasy, because now it's. They've been used to this more personalized, um, a little bit more personalized, uh, environment. And so I think that's, but at the same time, you know, like when when my kids started, it was twenty two in every class. And so we're just seeing this, this sort of change, um, it would be nice to have sixteen per class, if we could, if we could afford it, I understand that, there's a lot of. Benefits for that, um, but, you know, being fiscally responsible and seeing what we're dealing with here. May seem very difficult to, I mean, it's it's a hard decision, but at the same time, it boils down to dollars and cents. You know, how long are we gonna be able to sustain this, and that's sort of, I think, what we're dealing with here.
And I think the thing is, again, as we tell our teachers, we will do everything that, like, we'll make sure we do everything. To drop that two eighty one less throughout the year, you know, what what don't you do to cover that, because. That number is a rolling number, it doesn't just disappear, it's an ongoing expense all the time. So you have to be aware of that in the long term too.
So now would that come out of the cash reserves?
Yes.
Right now, our cash reserves are twenty percent already. So at some point, let's say that this number doesn't, let's say it gets higher. Three hundred, four hundred, that's going to the cash reserves, and then when it comes time to a tax levy time, now we're not twenty percent. Of what we've spent of expenditure, so now it's gonna increase property tax for us to kind of make that, so I think the public has to understand. That at some point, you know, we're reducing the levy right now, because we can't. Increase it because of our cash reserves, but as that number becomes more negative over time, the cash reserves are gonna drop. And property tax is going to pull up in order for us to, especially if we only get two percent, like, and and we don't get new students. Am I, am I reading that right, is that a good future sort of prediction that everybody needs to understand?
Yeah, we've, we are top right now, tax reserves always are, tax levies kinda go up. Pause, then they come back down, it's just that cyclical, and we're at the top right now, so they'll start coming back down and we'll have to raise it eventually, but. We're at the top of it right now, where we can't go any further.
Or like Davenport and Bettendorf, North Scott experiencing similar decisions?
Yeah, I think, um, Davenport, a little different situation, because they have been able to close buildings. So they were repositioning teachers in different locations and not having to hire, so. They will see what happens, they're probably about three, four years away from having conversations like this again. North Scott and Bettendorf are similar, I would say.
They've always been part of our district, I think I recall, I don't know if it's still this way or things have changed, but our class. Maximum size is less than the school districts, you know, so twenty two kindergarten is less than the max size at other districts. And so, you know, despite these challenges financially, I'm proud that we have stayed committed to that. Size, yes, I mean, I would love smaller class sizes, but, um, you know, I think that we're very fortunate to have the size that we have.
So, go ahead.
Quick question, so you mentioned the high school additions with the English, business, P E. You also mentioned the more fifth grade bubble. Can you explain that a little bit?
No, I'm just saying like, when you take now kindergarten, kindergarten will still be kindergarten first, second grade next year. Really, our fourth grade, I'd pull it up, but you'll start seeing like our fourth, fifth, sixth, those are like. The four hundreds, almost fifty, the five hundred number type class sizes, so they're just pushing through, you know, what we're going out.
And we already had high numbers at the junior high that are pushing into the high school.
Correct, yes, so our, our ninth graders coming in are bigger than our seniors going out. For the next few years.
All right, it wasn't too long ago that we were having so many in the elementary, I mean, look at our elementary schools.
I know.
It's, uh, it's interesting how times change, but.
So that gets us to the bottoms, the rest of the story on the two hundred eighty one that we are proving with the one point six eight tonight.
I was talking, Doug, about this, is that, you know, one of the legislative priorities this last year at I S B was, again, teacher, teacher recruit, retain. Retaining teachers and recruiting teachers, an interesting way of showing recruiting retention, for that the government really is showing us. Why the decision when we are a fairly well run district, having to make these hard decisions. I don't know what other districts are doing, I can only imagine what they're doing, but it's a fun way of showing recruiting, kind of making a priority, recruiting retaining teachers. We will.
And these are, these are real numbers that, you know, are public and we can share this with, um, our representatives and say, you know. Hey, this is what we're struggling with as a district and this is why, and I feel like if we can give them a good example, you know, it would help. So I know there's been some parents and teachers reaching out and really concerned about class sizes. So, uh, you know, any, any information we can, we can give, um. Legislation, legislative leaders to work with is really important.
Yeah, I I agree, I totally agree with those.
At one time, the state was floating around two point two five percent S S I, that would have given us an additional a hundred and five thousand dollars. But they didn't go there, so.
But they didn't go there, so.
Every quarter matters, when you think about it from that perspective.
Absolutely.
That's, it truly does, teacher, another quarter is teacher.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we are very fortunate where we are at, the position we're in, we can make decisions like this as a group and as teachers working together, I mean. Eight hours, I mean, you talk to many districts and they're like, how in the world do you negotiate in that short period of time? It's, so we're very fortunate, very proud of our teachers and our administrators who are part of that, so.
And the twelve years in the board, this is the first time I've had to deal.
Yeah.
This is a decision that none of us want to make, I mean, we would not like to eliminate any people at all, none of us, we shouldn't be put in this position, but we are. I think that the public needs to understand that, the public needs to understand that this is what we're dealing with, and it's only going to get worse unless things change. When it comes to public education in the state of Iowa, people have got to understand that.
And, and the good thing is through attrition, always, how can we keep doing that, you know, it's losing a job.
All right, is there any other questions or discussion? All right, I will give the motion.
I move the board approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six certified employees' contract wage and benefits package agreement.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Ayers, that the board approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six certified employees' contract wage and benefits. Package agreement with PVA as presented.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Director Wugley.
With sadness, yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
So the second one would be the administrative wage and benefits package approval of the same package increase.
Yeah, so on that one sheet that Mike had up, when he showed the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That was the number that would be for all of our administrators, our classified staff, which we will talk to, uh, next week. Or sorry, not this week, but next week, we'll start visiting with them and meeting confers, so they'll be at the one point six, he will explain all that. Um, that comes to two thirty-seven, and so what you see in here at this time now is our salary structure for all of our administrative positions. With a one point six eight percent increase, um, for all positions, that is the salaries then for our administrative teams. So you can see that there as well, um. On the twenty-eighth, April twenty-eighth, we would then bring to the table our classified salaries next. And custodians, thank you, yes, custodians be a part of that too, yes.
Any questions? I will take a motion.
I move the board approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six administrative employees' wage and benefits packages as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kunkel, second by Director Kenwisher, that the board approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six administrative. Employees' wage and benefits package as presented, we'll call both, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Director Wugley.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
I heard Mr.
Yes. Uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget guarantee resolution, Mr. Kenwisher.
All right, this is something that we are doing just as a precautionary measure, because the governor has not. I believe that is still the case, has not officially signed the legislation for the two percent SSA. Here at Pleasant Valley, if SSA would have been set at one point seven seven percent or lower. We would have been in a situation where we would have been in the budget guarantee. Again, what the budget guarantee does is it guarantees that your general fund, regular program budget. Would be a hundred and one percent of what it was the previous year, so you're not getting less. New money than you got in the year before, you get a hundred and one percent of what you got the year before. One thing important to note is that is funded entirely with property taxes, so if we were in the budget guarantee. And passed this resolution, it would be funded entirely by property taxes, so it would increase our property tax rate a bit. Again, this, the legislature has passed two percent SSA, so we don't believe this will be needed if the governor signs it. But just in case, we wanna be ready, just in case something weird would happen, and she didn't sign the two percent SSA to cover ourselves. So that's why we're asking the board to go ahead and, and pass this resolution tonight, just in case something like that would happen.
So if it came back as a one point seven five, we'd be in budget guarantee. And I think right now at two percent, when Mike was talking about other districts, I think there's a hundred and fifty-nine school districts in the state of Iowa. That would be at budget guarantee at two percent this year, so a hundred and fifty-nine school districts would be going back. To get property tax money to cover the one percent above what they got in the previous year. Three hundred and.
I think, I think it was like half.
About half.
Yeah, it's about half, half are gonna be in a budget guarantee.
Yeah.
Is there any chance that if she has, then she signs more?
I don't think, so I think the only thing I would say potentially could still happen is if they came back with a one-time. Chunk of money on top of the two percent, yeah, that'd be about the only thing I would think that would still be maybe lingering out there. And if something like that happened, then we come back and say, okay, how much is it? And then do we do what, because it's one-time money, do you do like a stipend for everybody at some time during the year? Based upon what that would be, we need to figure that out, um, it's not for ongoing salary, it'd be designed for. A bo-, yeah, in the business world, a bonus, yeah, we're also usually called a stipend, one-time stipend.
This is the first year in all my years working here, we've had to even worry about the budget guarantee because of our decline in enrollment. And the low SSA.
Again, open enrollment is pretty much putting us right at level for enrollment, you are, are size, but. Plus or minus standpoint.
The hundred and fifty-nine was this year or last year?
It's coming up here, I believe. That's one of the last bulletins they had shown, I think.
Did they levy the property, did they just calculate out what that one percent is gonna be and then that's basically?
Yeah, it was being calculated as part of our aid and levy and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And added on to the property.
So we would expect it to be signed soon, but.
Yeah, I would think so.
Hopefully.
It's on the governor's desk right now, the House and the Senate have agreed, um, and just waiting for that piece to happen. But all of our legislators, all of our advocacy groups believe it's gonna be signed at two percent.
All right, I will take a motion, no other questions?
I move that the board of directors of Pleasant Valley Community School District will levy property taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. For the regular program budget adjustments is allowed under section two fifty-seven point one four Code of Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Ayers, that the board of directors of Pleasant Valley Community School District will levy property taxes. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section two fifty-seven point one four. Code of Iowa.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Director Wugley.
Yes.
Director Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman.
Yes. All right, is there anything else? All right. Next meeting is in two weeks, it's gonna be an early start on April twenty-eighth, and then the following meeting will be made.